Do you hear me? I'm over there.
Good evening, folks. My name is Brooke Converse. I'm the Public Information Officer for the Contra Costa County Library. Thank you all for being here and for those of you joining us online. We're here tonight to bring you an opportunity to hear from the candidates running for District Four of the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors. I'd like...
No mic?
No. I can hear them. I'm just going to go to the whole people back here. They have...
There we go. Thank you. Sorry about that. I'll start from that part again. We're here tonight to bring you an opportunity to hear from the candidates running for District Four of the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors. We'd like to thank the two candidates who are here with us tonight, Deborah Allen and Ken Carlson. Thank you for being here with us. This event is brought to you by the Contra Costa County Library, the League of Women Voters Diablo Valley, and Contra Costa Television. Now, I'm going to introduce our moderator for the evening. Janet Hoy is a longtime member of the League of Voters and a... of the League of Women Voters, excuse me, and a past president of the State of North Carolina League. Thank you, Janet, and please take it away.
Thank you, Brooke.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Good evening and welcome to tonight's event. You can hear me okay, right? Cool. I'm Janet Hoy and I'm from the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley, and I will be your moderator tonight. Thank you for joining us this evening. This is a big part of what the League does, and it's a big part of making democracy work, which is what we are all about. So having people show up for forums like this in the beautiful public library in Walnut Creek is a big part of that. So I want to thank the candidates for being here tonight, and I'd like to thank all of you for being here tonight. Very important part of what we do. As Brooke said, this forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters Diablo Valley, the League of Women Voters of West Contra Costa, the County Elections Department, and CCTV. A moment about the League. You may already know this, but the League is a nonpartisan organization, and that means we never support or oppose candidates or parties. Instead, we take positions on issues, and we work very hard to educate the public about important community issues as well as all issues having to do with elections, hence why we are here tonight. This is a one-hour forum. We will start... we've already started at 6:30. We will close at 7:30, and it is for the Office of Contra Costa County Supervisor, District Four. There is one open seat and two candidates. And before I introduce you to the candidates, I just want to let you know what District Four consists of, because it sort of interested me. District Four is Clayton, Concord, Pleasant Hill, part of Walnut Creek, and the unincorporated area of Contra Costa Center. That's how it's described. So we have two candidates, Deborah Allen and Ken Carlson. Welcome. As you probably know, CCTV is recording this forum and will televise it, and it will be available on our, the League's YouTube channel, as well as on Voter's Edge. You probably have a chair with one of these on it. Voter's Edge is the name of the League's electronic voting information system. It is great. You can go on there, put your address in, get a copy of your ballot, so based on your zip code, et cetera, your ballot. You get information about the candidates in their own words. We don't write it, they do. You get information on all of the statewide propositions, pros and cons, and videos on each one of those, and some of them are a little confounding this go-round, so it's really important to know that, as well as everything having to do with the timing of the election, et cetera. So please visit Voter's Edge. It is a wonderful, wonderful tool. We do ask that audience members do not audio or video, so that we don't end up with portions of this forum being shown in social media or other places and not in its entirety, because often things can be misconstrued if they are out of context. I'd also ask that you silence your cellphones now, if you don't mind. In addition, I want to ask you in advance not to cheer or applaud any statement. We are going to maintain a courteous and civil approach, and although we probably have feelings about one or both of these candidates, let's keep them to ourselves until afterwards, when you can go and talk to the candidates themselves. Before the program began, the name of each candidate was selected at random to determine opening speaking order, and because there are two of them tonight, it was really easy, actually. The closing statements will be in reverse order. So Deborah is starting her opening statement first, and then Ken will go, and then Ken will do his closing statement first, and then Deborah will follow him. All of you have had the opportunity to ask questions, and thank you for doing that. It is a very important part of this evening. There are cards on some of the chairs, and Martha over here has cards. This is your forum. Please ask your questions. And our card reviewer over here, Ann Flynn, will take a look at them, and then we will ask as many of your questions as we can. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes... I'm sorry. Each candidate will have 90 seconds for the opening and closing, and will have 90 seconds to answer the question. We normally do it at a minute, but we thought we'd raise it to 90 seconds, because there's two candidates, and that way they can have a more fulsome answer. Also, if a candidate wishes, they have the opportunity for two rebuttals of one minute each, so please feel free to use that, and I will remind you, too. We have a timer visible to the candidates. In fact, we have two of them who are sitting right here. Speakers will see a green card. Hold up a green card. Oh, no green card. Never mind. You will see a yellow card, candidates, with a 15-second warning, and when your time is up, you will see a red card. Yay, thank you. Okay. We will now proceed with a 90-second opening statements, and we will start with Deborah.
Well, thank you. Good evening. I'm Deborah Allen. Why did I step up to run for Contra Costa Supervisor? Simply put, good governance. As a CPA at a business school, a strong sense of ethics, standards, and social responsibility was ingrained in everything that I did. I carried that through a 35-year career in executive financial management, business ownership, and the last 12 years of public service. Good governance is the duty of a governing body to deliver the services promised efficiently, in an impartial way, and without conflicts, favoritism, or questionable self-dealing. It means putting the service recipient first. That's why I served six years on the Contra Costa County Pension Board, growing and protecting over $7 billion of pension money on behalf of county workers, with a focus on growing a sustainable pension system for future generations. That's why I served six years on the BART Board of Directors overseeing a $2.4 billion annual budget with a focus on sustainability, accountability, transparency, and service reliability. I will advocate for good governance as a board supervisor in everything that we touch. I look forward to the discussion tonight.
Thank you, Deborah. Ken?
Good evening. First, let me just say thank you to the League of Women Voters, our friends here at the library, and CCTV for making this happen tonight. I'm grateful for the opportunity to be here with you. A little bit about myself. I am born and bred right here in Contra Costa County. I've been here my entire life. I grew up in these schools, in the Mount Diablo School District. I chose a life of public service from the very beginning. After leaving college, I began my career as a police officer for the city of Concord and served there for over 29 years in a variety of assignments, from crisis negotiator to neighborhood patrol officer to a traffic investigator. So I have a long and varied history of public service. I then went to the Pleasant Hill City Council, and I've been serving on the Pleasant Hill City Council now for over a decade. As part of my assignments on Pleasant Hill City Council, I served on the John Muir Committee Health Fund Board of Directors, the Family Justice Alliance Board of Directors, our Economic Development Subcommittee. I've served on our Budget Subcommittee and our Interview and Nominating Committee. On a county level, I serve on the Airport Land Use Commission and the Hazardous Materials Commission. I have a long, long history of leadership and experience within Contra Costa County and the city of Pleasant Hill. I am proud of our achievements in Pleasant Hill, and we're often held up as an example of our transparency, our fiscal responsibility, and meeting our goals and our community's expectations, such as a new library that we just opened last... on July 30th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. So I'm going to take moderator's discretion, and I looked up online the list of responsibility for a supervisor, and I want to read that to you. It's brief. Appointing most county department heads, except elected officials, and providing for the appointment of all other county employees, providing the compensation for county employees, creating officers' boards, commissions as needed, and appointing members to them, awarding all contracts, except those with authority delegated to the county purchasing agent, adopting an annual budget, sponsoring an annual audit made of all county accounts, books, and records, supervising the operations of departments, and exercising executive and administrative authority through the county government and county administrator, serving as the appellate or appeal body for planning and zoning issues, and also running a healthcare system and overseeing the sheriff's department, amongst other things. These are big jobs, big jobs. So my question is, how would you describe the county supervisor role in the way that you see it, and how will you be spending your time? And this time, we will start with you, Ken, since Deborah started before.
Thank you. You know, over the last 10 years, I've truly dedicated myself to engaging in the work, and that means serving on those committees, understanding our budgets, understanding land use. I have served just in this last two years on our General Plan Advisory Commission as we set the future for Pleasant Hill, exactly what the county is doing right now as we go through our general plan process. What are the land use choices going to be? What is the goals of the county going to be? I've had that experience. I've been doing that now for two years in Pleasant Hill alone on our own general plan, as well as our housing element. What is the housing future going to be in the county over the next eight years as we move into the next housing cycle? So there's a volume of work to be done, oversight to be done. It's essentially the same work I'm doing now, much more broader, and I go at it with the same passion and dedication that I've been with Pleasant Hill City Council. When I joined the Pleasant Hill City Council, one of my key critical issues was we did not have a long-term financial plan. We went with our biannual budget, but we didn't plan for the future, and we didn't have a strong reserve, and that was one of the goals that I wanted to accomplish early on on council. We now have a long-term, 10-year financial plan, and we have reserves in the area of $11 million. So we are well set for the next crisis that might be befalling us, as we look at the gas pumps every day that we pull up and see what we're facing in these times. So it's essentially a step up, but it's the same work that I've been doing for the last decade.
Thank you, Ken. Deborah?
Well, thank you. You mentioned a few things, the supervisor role, big things, a big job, that it really is, but I have the last six years' experience working on a very large public agency, in fact, the fifth-largest transportation transit agency in America. $2.4 billion annual budget there, $1 billion of operating budget, and the county's own general fund is about $1.3 billion, I believe. So only... this isn't really much of a step up for me. I'm used to working in a big environment. We have five labor contracts bargaining units. We have almost 5,000 employees, and so I believe I will slide in right at home, and managing budgets, well, that's been my career. So that, actually, I've been a leader on the BART Board of Directors in the financial side, both in budgets, bringing a more transparency in the form of an Office of Inspector General. I helped bring, actually, I was the first chair of the Audit Committee at the BART Board, and we are getting ready to embark upon a restructuring of our financial organization there. So how will I spend my time? I'm going to be looking for new initiatives, because I will hit the ground running. I will look for... I will be looking at some modernization initiatives, and I hope that the next budget will include much of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Deborah, you'll start with this one. How would you describe District Four, and what do you think are the top two priorities?
District Four is the center of the county. It's literally the center of what goes on in this county, and I'm excited to be involved in things like the airport, the Concord Naval Weapons Station. The top two... I mean, it is a... it's really a middle-class community. Lots of blue-collar workers in certain parts. We have sections of immigrant people who are new to our country. It's very diverse in this section of the county, and I'm looking forward to serving that role. I actually grew up very poor. I know what it's like to go to bed without dinner at night as a child, and so I'm looking forward to serving a wide variety of people that live inside of this district. Myself, I'm, you know, rose out of a blue-collar family and into really the middle class, and I look forward to encouraging every member of this district to do the same and beyond. Top two priorities for me, I believe, you know, really, we've got to continue the pressure on addressing rising crime and rising homelessness. I think the county's underway with a number of programs in serving people in crisis who are living unhoused, but I think we have a long way to go there. This, what's underway, is just a start. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do I describe this district? My home for almost the last 60 years. Like I say, I've spent almost my entire life in District Four, living and working. The top two priorities come down to housing and homelessness for me, and it's even broader than that, but it really does come down to homelessness and addressing the homelessness issues and housing. And they overlap. I'll share a little bit about the work I've done on the John Muir Community Health Fund. It's a grant-making initiative that we give out, $1 million in grants, and one of the things I learned there was not to be siloed, that there are so many overlaps. So when it came to access to healthcare, it was applying the social determinants of health. If we address issues such as housing insecurity and food insecurity, we can address the issues of why are people needing to access our healthcare system. I apply that same principle when it comes to housing and homelessness. If we engage and find opportunities. Pleasant Hill, we've just created over 500 workforce housing units in our own city, and those are the people, the teachers, the firefighters, those in our service businesses that can live and work in our own city, because it's affordable for them. We need to find more housing opportunities. I have engaged in land use for the last 10 years. That's one of the prime things we do on the city council, is make decisions about housing and land use decisions. I'm ready to go to work on that. I've been working on the general plan and our housing element for the last two years now, and have a strong understanding of those issues.
Thank you. So, Ken, this is for you. What will you do to lead the county in addressing global warming? I think this means the effects of global warming on our communities.
Again, I serve on the county's Hazardous Materials Commission, and one of the key issues we're addressing is sea level rise in our industries along our shorelines. We need to realign what we're doing in everything we do when it comes to carbon emissions, greenhouse gases, those types of things, to address those very things. We've talked about, and the county's already done it, banning methane or natural gas in our new construction for homes. So those are some of the simple things we can do, applying green building principles in all the land use that we do. Again, the new library that we just built, net zero, because everything we put into that building was green, so that we did not in any way impact our carbon footprint. And everything we should do, we should apply those principles. There are many issues that are coming before us. You know, we're moving into that era of electric cars, and so as we have those conversations and we have more electric cars on the roadway, where do those batteries go when they die? Where did they go? And we have nowhere to recycle them. Do we ship them overseas where they're buried, underground? I mean, so there needs to be addressed in every issue we do, all our construction, all our building, all our planning, and we need to plan for the future. We need to make sure that we're partnered with our industry and our other manufacturing, everything we do, that we're protecting the environment, we're prepared for sea level rise, and we're doing our best.
Thank you, Ken. Deborah?
Thank you. So what do you do to lead on global warming? I think, you know, there are a lot of things underway. I prefer to talk about climate change, because I think it's... it does change, has changed for thousands of years, and it is changing clearly. We see that. There are some new standards coming. The electric... they call it electrification, but it really meant banning natural gas in new homes. There... you know, I don't think electric cars are really going to be the long-term answer, and I think, as Ken mentioned, the battery, the materials, and the... the materials and the damage to the environment that are done by the materials and the batteries are somewhat negate, will negate those impacts of electric cars. I think we're already looking to the advancement of other types of fuel cells running cars. And there's a lot of advancement being made by companies like Chevron in that arena. So, you know, look, everyone wants clean living. I do. I'm, I'm really somewhat of an environmentalist myself. I love fishing. I, I fly fish in, in the far parts of Northern California. I love a natural environment, and I live in a clean environment myself. So, I think we have to keep the pressure going to keep focused not only on clean air, but also on, you know, clean water. Water is a huge issue for us. And I, I actually have, have been, I participated. Well, I won't, I'm out of time. I won't tell you about the, the water efforts. Maybe another time.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Deborah. Switching gears a little bit. So, Deborah, we'll start with you. What donors have contributed to your campaign?
Well, so, number of donors, a lot of them, actually. We just had a report last week, and there are pages and pages of them. Some of them are as small as $25, which don't actually end up on the lines, but all the way up to maximum of $2,500. My max donors would include the Deputy Sheriff's Association. It, it would include the Concord Police Officers Association. It would include, let's see, a number of business owners, mostly construction business owners. I did spend a career in construction, financial management. And so, I, I know a lot of construction business owners, and I am one myself, actually. So, a lot of small business owners are very interested in this race. They suffered greatly during the last two and a half years during COVID. And they, you know, they have some ideas about what they would have preferred to have seen. I'm, I, I won't go into that. But I also have a lot of individuals, a lot of them.
Okay. Thank you. You did answer that one already.
No, but I can if you'd like.
Okay, I would love you to. Yes, please.
Well, it started out in the primary. It's friends, family, and those that I, you know, just as small donors and friends, very grassroots in the primary. Currently, of course, I'm supported by labor. I come from labor. I support working families and, and building on that and, and making a better economic environment and support for our working families. So, a lot of labor support, a lot of developer support in the sense of the constructions, trades, and developers, those that are trying to fight the fight and bring housing to our communities. That's really just about it. I mean, I don't know who else you can share other than, like I say.
I think I read your report. I think you, you pretty much, most of it's labor.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of labor support. But again, that's where I come from. I'm, I'm a blue-collar, hard-working guy, and, and I recognize the efforts that those families and those workers bring to our community. And so, I do support them. I mean, we're facing some, you look at what we faced over the last three years, our frontline workers. All of them, for the most part, are, are union workers, our healthcare professionals, our first responders who have faced not only extremely difficult working conditions, but the risk of being exposed to the coronavirus and, and everything else they do. So, I'm, I'm proud to be a partner with labor, and I think we can accomplish great things.
Great. Thank you. There are a couple budget questions here, and I think I'll combine them. And I think, Ken, you start on this one. What are your budget priorities? And what do you think of the Budget Justice Coalition's advice on budget priorities? The last part is Budget Justice Coalition?
Yeah.
Which advises the county? Did you get all of it, or?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. I just don't want to miss any part of it.
Yeah, got it.
You know, the budget, budget process is, is challenging. Everybody within the county, our nonprofit partners, everybody's got their set of priorities. The priorities are meeting the needs of the county, making sure that we're providing the services we need to provide in an adequate way. I, I've been doing that in Pleasant Hill. You know, we've, we've managed to meet our budget expectations, never once cut services, and still meet our capital improvement projects. Those are the same things I would bring forward when I go to the Board of Supervisors. It's absolutely imperative that we bring the Justice Coalition, as well as budget transparency, fully to the light of day. And that's challenging, but not impossible to do. Everybody needs to have a voice in it and, and get the work. We have to. There are so many gaps in the services we as a county are not providing right now, our shortages in staffing, that we have to build partnerships with our nonprofit community. And we already do that. You know, half of the, the significant number of the services we provide are provided by our nonprofit partners under contract with the city, whether that's in the domestic violence, interpersonal violence field, our LGBTQ community, or others. We're supported significantly vis-à-vis with our nonprofit partners. We need to build that while we're building staffing and coming back online.
Thank you, Ken. So, Deborah, I'll repeat the question. What are your budget priorities? And what do you think of the Budget Justice Coalition, Coalition's advice on budget priorities?
My budget priorities are going to start first with the most essential services. That, that is going to be probably mostly in the mental health services arena and public health arena. Those are essential services that we promise to our most vulnerable populations, and we must deliver on them. And I have spent some time talking with people who work in and around those parts of Contra Costa County. And I don't think there's anyone who believes that we're, we, we could do a lot better than we're doing now. So, that, that will definitely be a budget priority for me. I will have a priority of not reducing public safety. I believe, you know, if we can find the money to continue to put more money to public safety, I will do that. We, you know, with respect to the process, though, and I think this gets a little bit to the Budget Justice Coalition and the transparency, don't lose sight of the fact that I'm coming from the BART Board of Directors, where, when I arrived there in 2017, the budget was one page. And we had one line item for all of the capital project money, one line item, capital projects. We got no information. So, the county is much more transparent than what I currently experience, but I will continue to work for transparency and accountability there.
Great. Thank you. And Deborah, you'll start on this one. How do you feel about privatizing subcontracting of public services? Is it a way to serve, to save public money while not reducing public service?
I don't think we always save money by privatizing things. I think it requires a careful and thoughtful analysis in any particular place where we attempt to do that. That said, we are facing a, a number of, of positions in Contra Costa County. I am told we, we are having trouble filling. And so, if we're having trouble filling positions and we have available to us an outside vendor who can at least temporarily provide help with the service that we need, I, I would be for that. Now, if we have ample labor within our county house to provide the service, I, I probably would want to take a hard look at, at the cost of actually, you know, this is a part of my platform, is streamlining and modernizing of county services. And I think there are a number of areas that we can look hard at, and we can find technology to free up some of the resources that we are spending in some areas so that we have the resources to spend in the other areas where we need it most. And I am, that is definitely on the table for me.
Thank you. Ken?
No. Don't, don't support outsourcing or privatizing in any way the services the county provide. I mean, that's our specialty. That's what we do. And not only that, when, when you go into public service and you're, you're working for the county, you're looking for career advancement opportunities. And I think we need to provide not only the educational opportunities, but the career advancement opportunities, that room to grow and expand. One of the greatest things I loved about being a police officer was that, one, opportunity to promote, but, two, that opportunity to diversify your experience level. Every three years, I could change assignment from being a patrol officer to a detective to whatever I chose to be, working a dog or, or being on a motorcycle. So, I think those are what we need to do. And again, I think we have gaps to close. We are facing challenges hiring people, and we need to get those roles filled. But we also have great community partners out there that we have relied on, you know, in our Family Justice Alliance coalitions and, and other nonprofit agencies out there that we can rely on. While we're building our, our healthcare and while we're building our mental health support systems, there are others out there that can help us fill those gaps. But we need to be actually aggressive in, in making these things happen and not just talking about them.
Great. Thank you, Ken. So, we'll start with you on this question. It may just be a yes and no. Will the county receive federal money from the new Inflation Reduction Act? If yes, how will you allocate these new funds?
We face these challenges when we, we receive DARPA funds. And, and there are opportunities for us to receive these funds, whether it's in infrastructure improvements, road improvements. They're available to us, and, and we have access to it. We need to actively get out there and pursue these opportunities. I don't know that that's actually happening in a way that is maximizing our opportunities. This is something we do, again, as a Pleasant Hill City Council member. I just approved last night our application for a federal grant under the, the Infrastructure Act to get additional roadway monies and, uh, infrastructure improvement money. It's there. It's available. We just need to go after it.
Thank you, Ken. Deborah?
I am actually not sure whether the Inflation Reduction Act that you mentioned provides an opportunity for this county to, to receive funding. You've got me there. But if it does, certainly, we should be going after any money that we can. You know, one of the areas that perhaps we need to expand in this county is the grant-making process. I know at BART, we actually do a really terrific job and have an entire department that does nothing but go out and look for new grant money for the system. That is their entire job, and they do a terrific job at it. So, I think if we have an opportunity to expand that in the county arena, that I would, I would be all for that. And if there are Inflation Reduction Act funds available, absolutely.
Great. Thank you, Deborah. And this one is for you. We have a couple of questions on immigrants. The first is, how do you plan on making immigrant and refugee communities feel safe and included?
Is that to me?
Yes, that's to you. I'm sorry. You're starting on that one.
How do we make them safe and included? I think, well, I, I think when they arrive here, we do have some services available to them. There are probably more services that, that could be provided to our refugee and immigrant communities. But oftentimes, there is a community already established when they get here that does take them in and help them get acclimated. I'm not sure that we really have a situation where people are just sort of landing here with nothing and, and no help. But, but I, I do believe we do need to work at making them feel welcome, and we need to work at providing them with the services that we have allocated for those communities.
Thank you. Ken?
I'll just go back to when we were facing these challenges back in 2016 and, and even before. I authored in Pleasant Hill our Welcoming an Inclusive Cities Resolution that was very clear and very succinct in that we welcome everyone, no matter of your immigration status, no matter of who you love, no matter of who you are, race, color, gender, identity. It was, it was fully inclusive. And we made a point of incorporating that message in everything we do. Matter of fact, we've just created a diversity commission. And I know we're going to talk about the county, but these are the things I'll bring forward. We, we created our own diversity commission and, and created a program, Everybody Belongs. And you go on and you sign the pledge as a business owner, a church, a school, an individual, that you are going to be that person. The work I do with the John Muir Community Health Fund, this was one of the critical issues we faced over many years, the fear of even going to get access to healthcare. Even if you were going to somewhere like La Clinica and, and you were Latinx, did you feel comfortable? Were they going to take documentation or identification from you that you felt put you at risk as an, as an immigrant, or based on your status? We need to make sure that everything we do as a county, that we are not, one, cooperating with INS in their deportation processes and making sure that we're providing the services to them, no matter of who they are or their status.
Thank you, Ken. And this goes to you, and this is a follow-up on the immigration questions. Would you be willing to meet regularly with immigrant communities to learn more about their concerns and needs? Why or why not?
Absolutely. Again, one of the initiatives we worked on at the Community Health Fund was when we were pulling out of Afghanistan, a lot of those that were supportive of the US Armed Forces were having trouble getting out or were getting out, and under the Trump administration faced challenges of mainstreaming into American society and having a support network. And we partnered with Catholic charities, Jewish families, as well as the Afghan community, to make sure that the resources were there for them. And it was great to meet with them and to share their stories. I, I think it's a great opportunity to understand more. I'm very proud of the fact that I, I lived in Korea for two years, and I kind of have an affinity and an affection about learning about different cultures and challenges and, and those that they face. And this is a whole new world in some respects. They're coming from oppressed societies, and just trying to figure out how to function in our world is, is a challenge. So, I'd be, I think that'd be a great opportunity, and I would look forward to it and welcome it.
Thank you, Ken. Deborah?
Yes, absolutely. It's our job to meet with all members of all, you know, corners of the community, no matter where they're coming from or, or what they represent. So, my door is always open. But I think, you know, I do some of this already. I, I do know a number of the people who run the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce in Contra Costa County. I, I have met with some of the business owners in the Monument Corridor, who are of various different cultures. And last week, I was, the Concord Chamber of Commerce now has a subcommittee of Latino businesses that I attended breakfast with and spoke to. I, I love diversity. I love new communities and cultures. And I'm very open to addressing the concerns of each of those communities.
Great. Thank you. Deborah, you'll start with this one. The Board of Supervisors has oversight of many things, including the county hospital, county clinics, and the healthcare plan. What is your position on a woman's, woman's right to choose?
I am pro-choice.
Thank you. Okay. On to you, Ken.
Absolutely. Support a woman's right to choose. I think we need to even go beyond that in the sense of making sure that we are firm in our vocalizing, one, a woman's right to choose, gender-affirming care, making sure that those in need are getting the services they need. I'm proud to be supported by Planned Parenthood of Northern California because of my stance on a woman's right to choose, as well as the support for the LGBTQ community and gender-affirming care.
Thank you, Ken. And this.
Can I make a follow-up statement?
Yes, of course.
I just want to state that I did not apply for support from Planned Parenthood.
Okay, thank you. So, Ken, this is for you. Racism has been an issue in our country for at least 400 years. What measures would you take to address justice, or injustice, I guess, for minority groups, including African-Americans, Hispanics, Native Americans, Asian-Americans, and immigrants from Middle Eastern countries?
I've been engaged in this work for a while now. I would continue to do it. One of the things that we did with the George Floyd incident and, and us coming to, you know, it becoming a, a public issue again, coming to light, facing our history of the racial disparities that we faced in our, in our country over many, many years now. A lot of people came together, organizations, groups, individuals, put together their, their kind of racial justice statement. And we did that, too, at the John Muir Community Health Fund because we're dealing with a large, a, a large group of marginalized populations, those needing services and support. So, we true sat down and said, we want to create a social justice statement and, according to our mission. And when we did that, because clearly, we're already doing it, but when we did that, it wasn't just a statement. It was, how do we measure it? How do we measure ourselves and our accountability in the work we're doing? Are we actually putting in? Are we actually putting into play the words that we're putting on paper? So when we put these words to paper, whether it's the county or any other group I'm involved in, it's going to come with measurable metrics. We want to make sure that we're meeting goals. We're not just putting words to paper, we're putting the action out there and then we're showing that we're actually doing the work as opposed to just talking the talk.
Thank you, Ken. Debra?
I serve for everyone in the community, regardless of their race, their culture, and any protected class. We still have a lot of work to do in race relations in this, not only just in this community, but, you know, in our country. We all know that their racism still exists and we still have work to do there. The last, the work of the last few years, the, you know, I mean, let's face it, there was unrest over this in the last couple of years. And while it's difficult to watch the unrest, I think we come out of that with a new understanding from the perspective of all ages of people as to how people really feel, who feel like they have been the victim of racism. I think accountability is a good measure and I will work with the existing county programs. I know they exist, there are commissions underway on this. I am looking forward to working with them to further the work they're doing. But I want to end with just a little bit of caution because myself, I operate in an environment at BART where I have been accused of being racist, and we're now kind of seeing that play out in this campaign as people are, you know, going around talking about that. And we have to be careful about how we define that and work in that arena.
Okay, thank you, Debra. I want to loop back to homelessness. I think both of you have raised it in answers to other questions, but I want this to be a direct question. So the question is, how will you address homelessness in Contra Costa County? And this is on the minds of a lot of people. You start, yes.
Okay. So how do I define it? I think it has actually a definition, and I actually brought with me the, you know, the point in time counts that just came out, which say that, you know, it's going up and over the last two years. How do I define it? I think there are different segments now of homelessness. There is a person living on a person's couch is considered homeless. They don't have a permanent place to rest their head. We have people living in cars. And then, of course, we have the chronically unhoused, who are living on the streets in tents. And from my perspective, that is the most inhumane thing that we can do is to allow them to continue to live on the streets. So, but really homelessness, for me, is a symptom typically of deeper underlying issues in a person's life that cause them to be unstable in their housing. And that is what I want to address. I'm known for going after the more long-term solutions to problems. We can look for short-term places for these people to live. I think that is underway. We have more work to do there to try to get them into temporary places. But we also need to focus on permanent housing where support services are available for the underlying cause, whatever that is, of their instability.
Thank you. And Debra, I'm sorry, I may have misstated the question. It was, how will you address homelessness, not define? It's okay, though, if you want to rebuttal, you're welcome to it, but we'll let Ken go.
I was going to define homelessness just to stay on point, but...
If you want to, you're welcome to. I'm sorry if it was...
But I would just follow up with, even those that are facing housing insecurity, making that choice of do I put food on the table as opposed to pay the rent, as opposed to go, you know, put gas in the car to go to work? And we're facing those challenges even more right now as we see inflation and the price of gas. The other thing is a significant, or, you know, a good number of our homeless come out of things such as divorce. We see seniors on the street because it's a decision about housing or healthcare costs. So there's a broad array of what we need to address, and quarterly, I think we need to address those that are the chronic homeless out on our streets. And it's creating more resources for them, more mental health programs, more addiction service programs, and again, housing, but it has to be supportive housing. There's examples of that, right in my own community, where if you're a victim of interpersonal violence, there's an apartment complex for those victims that actually have a service center on site. So if you need mental health counseling, you need social services support, your children need tutoring, it's on-site. You're not having to chase all over the county to see different services. And this was the model we used when we created the Family Justice Center, bring all the services to one place instead of a victim who's already facing challenges, having to go multiple directions across the county to get the services and support they need, whether that's our courts or legal or housing or food.
Thank you, Ken. This is, I think this is a quick yes or no. And we'll start with you, Ken. Do you have a prior professional relationship with the SENO Corp? S-E-E-N-O?
No, but I did live in one of their homes for a short period of time.
Okay, thank you. Debra? No, okay.
No, I lived in one of their homes too, but I will actually point out that my opponent did take money from, directly in his campaign, from one of the partners of the New Concord First Partnership.
Which is not SENO.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to clarify that, Ken?
Yeah, it's California first, and I'll just add, they moved to Pleasant Hill, they purchased a building in Pleasant Hill, they, not only that, but when they moved into our city, they immediately reached out to city staff, they engaged our chamber, they engaged, they are actually a really good community partner. However, when I took that contribution, I had no idea they were part of the Naval Weapons Station project. They are a 10% party of the Naval Weapons Station project. But I've made very clear where I stand on the Naval Weapons Station project.
Okay, thank you. So you just, that was sort of a rebuttal or an addition, so we just start with you, right, Debra?
Yeah, I don't have any rebuttal. I spent my career in the construction industry, but never had any connection with...
Totally understand. I think this is a question, a follow-up question related to that. What are your positions regarding the urban limit line and views regarding Concord Naval Weapons Station acreage being included? When lines were drawn, people thought CNWS property was going to be open into perpetuity. Want me to read it again?
Yeah. We thought that the Naval Weapons Station would be open in perpetuity? That's...
The space would. The Oak acreage.
So I would answer the question with the question. We are moving into what's called our eighth cycle of RENA, our Regional Housing Needs Allocation, which is set by ABAG, MTC, and the state. So they have determined that there is a shortage of housing in the nine Bay area counties of over 449,000 homes. And we are facing homelessness issues and we're facing affordability issues. Pleasant Hill alone, we need to come up with 1,800 housing units over the course of the next eight years. How do we do that? And we have to build, and we need to address these issues. So we have to build housing. I support the urban limit line. I don't have any issue with the urban limit line, but our community needs to have a cultural shift. They need to understand that if we're not going to build out, we're going to have to build up. And every time I bring a development project into Pleasant Hill, if you go over two stories, you get a significant public pushback. So how do I build in Pleasant Hill or in the county with the regional housing needs allocation they've received? How do you build that many housing? We need to build housing. And I've been involved with the Naval Weapons Station project as an employee of Concord, as well as in the political realm, pretty much from the beginning. And my understanding was, a portion was going to be open space, a portion was going to be housing, and they have to come up with a master plan. And then East Bay Regional Parks got the several thousand acres.
Thank you, Ken. Debra?
So the urban limit line is going to come back to the voters, I believe, in a few, couple of years. I'm not sure if that's '25 or '26. And it will be up to the voters to decide if they want to expand it and move it out. My position, you know, on that currently is that if there are really good and viable projects that would, that could be built, except that there's a small component of needing to expand the urban limit line, I would be willing to consider those projects and the expansion of that line. I'm not willing to go expand the lines or, you know, try to approve projects that are going to, you know, be whole new subdivisions outside the urban limit line. That's not what the voters asked for. And, but there is a little bit of history to this. The urban limit line was a model that came out of what was done in Oregon, I believe, I'm not sure if it was the Portland area, but that's where the idea came to here. And when, and so what has happened here is we have not expanded that line hardly at all in 30 years. But in Oregon, where it came from, they actually have made, they've taken votes on expanding it, and the people have actually voted here and there to expand the urban limit line. With respect to Concord Naval Weapons Station, I've been involved in that, really, I was involved 20 years ago, and I could say a lot more about that, but I'm out of time.
Okay, thank you. So we have about five more minutes. I'm going to try to get three questions in. If it's okay with you, can we go to a minute answer instead of 90 seconds? Is that okay? Is that okay, timers? Okay, good. So I think this goes to you, Debra. What do you think is appropriate for sheriff's oversight in our county? One minute, please.
Yeah, I've been asked this before. I, you know, at the BART Board of Directors, we have a lot of oversight on our police department. We have a citizens review board, which is made up of community members, and we also have a professional independent office of police auditor that is a paid position with multiple staff members. So I've seen both models, and I can tell you that I would not advocate for the citizens' review board model. Oversight of a sheriff's department really should lie first with the county board, actually first with the sheriff himself. Responsibility should lie with him, then with the county board of supervisors as oversight. But I actually, I know they didn't do this recently, but I would advocate if there was, you know, people willing to do that, to hire a professional to work within the county under the board of supervisors as an independent auditor when it's needed.
Thank you, Debra. Ken?
Yeah, I am cautious to say a citizen oversight board. We've seen what's happened in Oakland and how it's politicized and has caused a lot of damage. What I would support, again, the first line, and I did this job for over a year, was internal. The sheriff should be having internal oversights, but it should be transparent and accountable. We need to be able to understand that. State laws have changed to make that a little more transparent than before. But I would support an inspector general who has the subpoena powers to subpoena records and to take a look at what's going on internally and review and oversight of the sheriff's office. Again, internal or citizen advisories can be extremely political and, you know, as a police officer, I'll just share, I want those that are overlooking my shoulder to understand the work I've done, have some experience in it. You face a lot of challenges.
Thank you, Ken. A couple of questions here on libraries, and since we're in this lovely library today, I thought this would be a good way to sort of get close to wrapping it up. So first is, I'm concerned about Christian nationalists interfering with what public libraries can provide. If this is a problem in Contra Costa County, is, I'm sorry, is this a problem in Contra Costa County? And if so, what can be done about it? And the corollary is, libraries are an important resource for the public. Can we ever increase funding so libraries can be open six days a week?
It will be in January in Pleasant Hill, just saying. Libraries are the heart of our community. It provides so many resources and services and shelter to all of our community. And I'm just coming out of the library planning project, building project, and then grand opening, near and dear to my heart. So I would love to see increased funding, and if not, I would advocate to each of our cities to increase their funding and support. That's what we do in Pleasant Hill, is we expand our hours by making a contribution because we recognize such the important role they play in our community and how supportive of the community they are. They're a gathering space, a meeting place, a safe space for our kids. When it comes to this CRT, you know, I don't think we faced it. I know we've had some resistance when it came to drag story time and those types of things, but in reality, I think we've been very welcoming in our libraries in Contra Costa.
Thank you, Ken. Debra?
I'm not even aware of the Christian nationalists and what they're attempting to do with libraries. Unfortunately, I run a transit system and not a city, so libraries sort of don't enter into that for me yet. But the, you know, I think, I think the, you know, freedom of speech should exist within our libraries and everywhere. And if there are, you know, opinions that are being put forth in libraries that some people don't agree with, I don't agree with certain people trying to say that shouldn't be in a library and this should. Control of our free speech is not high on my list. So I think, you know, as was said, it's an important resource for the public. The libraries can actually, I think, do more in providing resources for our most vulnerable populations. And sometimes, you know, there are homeless people who wander into libraries and get some assistance, and so expansion of that, I think, is a good thing, however we can help.
Thank you, Debra. So that's the end of our Q and A session. If your question, we couldn't get to all the questions, if your question wasn't answered, I think that the candidates will probably stay for a few minutes after this and would be happy to meet with you to answer specific questions. So it's time for the closing remarks and closing statements, and we are going, it's 90 seconds, and we will begin with Ken.
Well, again, thank you to the library, Legal Women Voters, and CCTV for having us here tonight. It's a great opportunity just to get to know you all. Again, I am Ken Carlson, lifelong Contra Costa and dedicated public servant. I'm endorsed by Congressman De Solnay, State Treasurer Fiona Ma, Assembly Member Grayson, Senator Dodd, all of the Pleasant Hill City Council, all of the Concord City Council, four of the Walnut Creek City Council, and the list is just, goes on across the entire, not only Contra Costa County, but the Alameda and Contra Costa region. Just to share some of my priorities, housing. We need to build housing. We need to build supportive and transitional housing and address homelessness issues. I support reforms in law enforcement. With a 29-year career in law enforcement, I have the experience of what works and what doesn't work and what our shortcomings are. We need to do better when it comes to mental health and social services and putting those burdens on our law enforcement officers. I support our A3 program, our anywhere, anytime, anyone, and getting the mental health support and services they need when they're in crisis. I support economic development and our small business community, as well as sustaining our climate change and sustaining our climate and sustainability within our communities.
Thank you, Ken. Debra?
Well, thank you to CCTV and the Legal Women Voters and all of you for being here tonight. I spent a career in managing businesses and looking for efficiency and cost effectiveness in how to deliver services. Government services should be approached in the same manner, and in me, you would have a supervisor that cares as much about how the county's money is spent as your own family budget. I was once a working mother, and I understand the importance of a strong education system and family support structure and the safety of our children. I will work for healthy families and safe communities, and I will focus on public safety and safety net help to our most vulnerable populations, our disabled, our elderly, our children, and those in crisis. I have a proven track record of governing on a five-county regional district independent of special interests. It causes a lot of battles on that board, but I am truly independent. My work has involved billions, not millions. I'm no puppet. Regardless of the name-calling and the threats and lies and intimidation coming from special interests on the opposition's side in this race, I promise I am laser-focused on serving you first as a Contra Costa resident. If this is what you want, please vote Debra Allen, debraallen.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Debra. So thanks to both of our candidates... So thanks to both of our candidates, Deborah Allen and Ken Carlson. We very much appreciate your time being here, and we very much appreciate your time being here. Again, in conjunction with the League, we hope to keep democracy strong in our country, and this is one very grassroots way to keep it going. So thank you for attending. Vote November 8th. Ballots are starting to be mailed out October 10th, which is coming up. And if you need information on the election, votersegg.org. It's from the League and Maplight. You can find out all about your candidates in their own words. You can look at your ballot, you can find out all the statewide propositions, and you can find out who's supporting what in terms of candidates and propositions. That's where Maplight comes in, which is incredibly important information. So thank you again for your attention. Very much appreciate you being here. Good night.
I just wanted to thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Deborah, thank you so much. Thanks. Thanks.